There we go. Oh, we're live now? Oh, hi, everyone. All right, well, welcome to those who are viewing online and those who are here. Welcome to the town hall meeting. Maybe some context if you didn't know what this was or you hadn't heard about it. We asked a few weeks ago, we've given some time for questions to be answered or to be answered here, but to be asked anonymously, right? Because the mindset behind this is a lot of times people may have a question, but might be afraid to be the one who asks it. And so by using the internet and gathering questions anonymously, we really hope to answer some of them. So with me is head elder OJ Ganesh and then Ben Crawford, who is the chairperson of the 2020 Building Campaign. We could just get into it. I don't know how else we want to do it. There's some questions.
Maybe start with a prayer to start us off?
Yeah, let's do that. Kind of heavenly Father, God, I ask that you would be with our church, those who are gathered here, those who come faithfully every week online. And Lord, I pray that the Holy Spirit would find them where they are. God, these questions that have been asked, they're asked because people care about this church and they care about the mission. And so, God, we realize that this church is not ours. God, that this mission is not ours, but that you've given us a responsibility to care for this church and to work with you. And so, God, right now with the questions we have, Lord, may we answer them well. May you be with us always in your name. Amen.
Hello? Okay, great. So several questions were submitted through the website that was posted, through the link that was posted. There were about 16 questions that were posted before the deadline, and so we're going to go through those. And I do know there's more questions out there, and so maybe we might do something like this in the future, who knows? But as things start opening up, we may have more of an opportunity just to talk just directly face to face about these things. But starting with the questions, and so the way we'll do this is I'll just ask the questions and Pastor or Ben, if you guys would like to answer, you can just jump on in. The first one, it was just a general question. It says, "When will the pandemic end?" And it was just kind of an open question, I guess, and we don't know exactly what it refers to, but when will the pandemic end?
I think I understand, or at least I hope I understand what this question is trying to ask. It's probably referring to things like regular programming and Sabbath schools and just that feeling we had, say, back in 2019. We were not having the same issues that we were. And that's probably what I'm hoping this question is. And to answer that question, I don't actually fully know, right? What I do know is that right now Florida has been on a consistent downward trend, and I've been very happy about that. I do also know that something like what's been happening in Michigan could happen, where it's going down and then comes back up, and we would probably need to adjust accordingly to something like that. Things like regular programming, though, that's been talked about, that's been happening. Right now, I'm hard pressed to think of certain programming that could not happen, other than things like potluck or something. But socials are happening again. The youth, if they'd like to do things, any outdoor activity is good to go. We're doing okay, and so continue to pray for that and pray for this church that things continue to go well.
What about masks? So the three of us aren't wearing masks up here. But we're also socially distant from each other, so the question was, "What about masks?", you know? So that's when people think about the pandemic ending, and you're right, they're thinking about going back to the way things were. We didn't wear masks before. We weren't apart before.
Yeah, the masks. What I can say, the most practical way I think I can answer this, to try to answer that question, is that we are really watching what Alachua County is doing. So right now, it's still being asked that masks are worn, and so we are doing that as well. If it comes to a point where Alachua County says, "Don't even worry about it anymore", that would need to go through the board, and that would have to be a board decision, but that's what we're looking for. That's the most practical way I can answer that without being so heady and philosophical about it.
Yeah, I think with the masks, so you're right, we are following the lead of what's going on with our community, essentially Alachua County. There's a group, many folks have heard about it, the Reintegration Group. They meet every two weeks now. They were meeting every week for a long time. But they are constantly watching what's happening in terms of trends of people getting vaccinated and trends of infection and things like that, but also policies that are changing with masks and distancing and things like that. And also, you know, how can we adapt and change our policies? Like, we want to go back to the way things were. What are the steps to get there? So right now, wearing masks is important. Right now, being distant from each other is important. People's vaccination status, we're not asking if you got vaccinated or not, but that's important. I talked to a church member today, and as I was talking with her, I recalled an interview that I'd heard that was on the news, where a doctor was saying, "Yeah, masks and distancing. What you're really worried about is breathing other people's air", right? Do you feel comfortable breathing other people's air right now? And that's what it comes down to. We want to make sure that our brothers and sisters that are around us that also want to come to church feel comfortable too. And if wearing masks helps them feel comfortable with that, then maybe that's something that we can do, because we want everyone to come back together. These are the kind of steps that we have to take for now.
I was going to say, that's another thing. As much as there are people who want us not to wear masks, there is a good group of people in the church who would feel uncomfortable coming if there were no masks. So navigating that duality is what we really need prayer for. And so what we want to do is make sure that the majority of people feel comfortable. So if masks is what makes people feel comfortable right now, that's what we are going to continue doing for the time being.
Moving on to our next question, this is one that's actually already been answered. This question came in, said, "Can the church service go back to 11:00 a.m.?" So this is a good time to talk about that.
Yes, yes. In fact, this Sabbath, May 1st, is the first church service that will go back to the pre-pandemic time at 11:00 a.m. So if you come at 12:15, you will probably have missed it. So 11:00 a.m. this Sabbath.
I know along with that, we can probably answer this question too, it wasn't listed there. If church service is going to be at 11:00 a.m., what's happening with Sabbath schools? And I'm kind of looking out in the crowd at someone who's doing a Sabbath school right now.
Yes, so what has been asked, and if you run a Sabbath school, if you lead a Sabbath school, you've probably been reached out to by Annette. We are asking Sabbath schools to pivot along with us, starting again at 9:30. So it's going to be a little uncomfortable right now as things are changing, because a lot of Sabbath schools are still online. But we're hoping that the pivot will help get everybody kind of into the rhythm of starting things at 9:30, church service at 11, and you being able to get home and eat at a normal time.
Great, excellent. This is a question that came in. So we have a church board. It meets once a month. It is comprised of pretty much all the ministries of our church can attend a church board meeting, as well as elders and anyone else. And so the question was, "Can the board meeting minutes and financial report be posted each month?" I can just answer that. The short answer to that is yes, absolutely. I can tell you that everyone who's on the church board, including all of the ministry leaders, do get a copy of the minutes, the agenda, the financial report, sent to them by email. So you can definitely talk to any of them if you know them. But we can definitely post that on our boards that are outside in the entryway area as well. We kind of don't want to post it online or send it to everyone en masse, just for a variety of reasons, but we can definitely post it so it's available, so you can see it. Also, if you have any questions, you can always reach out to Pastor or myself or any of the elders, or Jerry, who's on our board, or Bob Solomon, or just any of the folks who are on the board. We'll be more than happy to tell you what's going on. Nothing there is hidden. We like transparency. We like being, you know, open about what's going on at our church, because, you know, we want everyone to love the process and things that are happening here at church and be part of that.
Yeah, and if I can, really quickly, I might say it again, and I'm going to start saying it more at church. In terms of if you need to reach out and say, "Get the board meeting minutes", my number and my email are on the website. I really am trying to, and I've posted as well a way that you can sign up to have a dedicated visitation time if you want to discuss something. So if you need to get in contact with me, my number, my email is there. And if you, I'm giving my number out to anybody who asks. So somebody, if you really don't know, somebody else in church might have it. Ask them. That's free use. You can have that. I don't want to do it on the internet, although it is on the website, but I don't know. It's on the website.
Sounds good. Moving on to our next question. This question's going to sound a little funny, but it's all connected. "When will there be children's and adult Sabbath school again?", right? So right now, if you come to church before the worship service, we do have one adult Sabbath school that's running, and that's being taught by Reedland. And from what I've heard and what I've seen, it's a wonderful Sabbath school. I think what they're asking is, "When will there be more adult Sabbath schools? And when will the children's programs open?"
Yeah, so if we had, right, like a vision board of how we are navigating this reopening, what we've been praying about, and some things have already been done, right? So in April, we have opened up extra seating. So we've taken away some of the restrictions of, you know, you can't sit in this pew, but you can sit in the other one, so that's not here anymore. May 1st, right, so now we're opening the church back at 11, pre-pandemic time. We have been praying, and as long as the numbers continue going in the direction they're going, June 1st, June 1st is when we are asking if there are Sabbath schools that are comfortable, come home, come back, meet here in our classrooms at 9:30. In terms of the children's Sabbath schools, it's the same thing. We're hoping all the Sabbath schools can be back by June 1st.
Just to highlight what you said, though, there is an important point to that. It's whether the Sabbath schools are comfortable coming back, right? I have heard from folks, even today, I got a call from a church member who was talking about, you know, comfortability and coming back for Sabbath school and whether there'd be online offerings as well. I think the plan is it's open if the adult Sabbath school groups would like to come back, if the youth Sabbath schools would like to come back, the place, the space will be available. If some groups want to still be online, they can definitely be online. It becomes trouble when you want to do both of them at the same time, because that requires some infrastructure and pieces and training and things like that. I think we'll never get rid of our online offerings. We're still going to have some kind of online Sabbath school that's going to be available, but that's kind of how it stands right now. Now, with the children's programs specifically, I know there's questions about that, and that's a little different. Did you want to?
Yeah, it's, if you've noticed, right, and this is something we've been asked a few times, I know I have, and I know you definitely have. Why aren't there children's Sabbath schools online? And, you know, do we care about the kids? And to answer that, we absolutely care about the kids. And I think, you know, and I could be wrong, but I feel like in this pandemic, two groups of people have been hurt more than others, and I think it's the children and the elderly trying to pivot with all of this online offerings and things like that. We, right now, the reason there are no children's Sabbath schools, we do not have people to lead them. And as we move into June 1st, we will probably find ourselves in a similar situation where there definitely can be a children's Sabbath school. We do not have the manpower to run a children's Sabbath school. So if you have a desire, if you have a desire to lead a Sabbath school for children, reach out to Melvin Poole or myself. So Melvin is the new superintendent for children's Sabbath schools, and he needs you, and we need you. We would love to have our children come back and have regular children's programming, but we just do not have the resources to do that.
Yeah, church works best when we work together, and so we really need people to get involved and to help out, to make these programs actually happen. So moving on to our next question, this one is, if there was a specific Sabbath school class that agreed to wear masks, could it be possible to start having class in the church again? This kind of goes back to what we just said. So the plan is June 1st, there will be open space for Sabbath schools to meet again. Will there be masks? Will there be distancing? From where we stand right now, it looks like yes, but as we get to June 1st, that may or may not change. We don't know. So just kind of keep your ears open. We're aiming for June 1st, and hopefully as we get there, well, first of all, there will be more information, and as we get there, we'll have more guidance as to what to do as well.
Yeah, and just to highlight this again, it really depends on the comfortability, I guess, of the teacher. The buildings or the rooms will be open to be used, but if the class doesn't feel comfortable coming back, we're not going to force them. So there may be opportunities for more Sabbath schools to form, right? If you'd like to meet in person, but your teacher doesn't feel comfortable or you'd want to start a new one, there is an opportunity for that to happen. So looking forward to that.
Absolutely. Let's see, there was a question that said, "When do we anticipate the church will be fully opened again?" I think we've kind of covered that, a variety of different previous questions.
And I guess to maybe continue on that, I talked about in March, we did, or April, we did one thing, and May, we're doing another thing, and June, that seems to be what is working best. We don't want to just, you know, throw the church into a cold pool of water, so to speak. You know, we're trying to ease ourselves back into it so that we can do it as safely as possible. We're running a lot of tests, right? So the Sabbath school that meets in person is a test. And every month, we're trying something new, so continue to pray for us.
So our next question, it's a very important question. It's about the Vision 2020 program and the improvements that have been going on. It's what's happened with the 2020 improvements? What are the improvements to the church property? I know this is one that Ben, Ben is, he is the head of our building committee, and the building committee's been super important and has continued to function through the pandemic. It's one of the few groups that continuously worked through the pandemic and kind of benefited from the fact that there weren't people here, and so got a lot of projects off the ground. And Ben, would you like to fill us in on that?
Well, first of all, I just want to thank the Lord for making it possible for us to be able to accomplish anything, because that's what we asked for to start with, that he'd be involved, and it's all his program. So we just want to thank him for just blessings so abundantly. And I'm telling you, folks, without that blessing, the way things have gone off and on, we would have been able to accomplish very little. And next, I'd like to thank everyone that has contributed to this program, where we're trying to upgrade the church. As all of us know, that this old building is, what, 40, 45 years old? This one, and the one across the way is even older. And when this church was finally completed, I was a young man. I thought I was then, anyway. And now that this time has passed and the church is 40, 45 years old, and it's starting to fall apart, just that I'm an old man, and I'm beginning to fall apart too. As you saw me trying to get up these steps a while ago, you understand. It's just such a wonderful feeling to know that the Lord has blessed us in such a way that we've been able to accomplish things that we have by His grace. I want to encourage the church members, now, be a church member, anybody that's willing to contribute, continue to contribute to this program, because we've got a long ways to go, folks. And you may think that we haven't, we've done very little so far, but for us, we feel like we've done quite a bit. So just wanted to encourage you to continue to contribute and give up to the program so we can do the things that we want to do. Like I say, a long ways to go. I think that the answer to the question that's, that has come back to me, I can only, don't know really where to start here, but I wanted to say, first of all, that we have a wonderful committee, and I feel privileged to be a part of it and working with them. Wonderful, and they do, they give their all. I know that they have, they have work, they have a job to make a living, so they're not always able to show up, but I know they're doing the best that they can, so I thank them for that. So first, on the list of needs, when we started this committee and we started to asking for funds, and, well, the pandemic hit real hard, and it just knocked us down. And I've never been able to do a lot of things that we wanted to do, get together to, for the program to grow. But the first thing that we took up was, we understood that, I guess, the west wing, yeah, the west wing of the church roof needed to be replaced. We got bids on that and came up with a good one, we thought, and then we got in trouble because of something that happened that, I guess, the old roofers had to go back and take, go to school again. And the conference took it up, and it seemed like they, I'm sorry, but they drug it, and we kept waiting, and we had already given okay on the first bid, on the bid for the, to do the work. So it took about two months to get this done and finally got it taken care of. And what they did was they replaced the roof on the, roof, I'm sorry, on the west end with both measures and, well, completely around the, both wings of the church. And the second thing was that we felt like, priority wise, that we needed some air conditioners, new air conditioners in the classrooms, all the classrooms. So we were able to replace eight split, many split units in classrooms. Very quiet, very good, heating and air, so. Third project was drainage. As most of you know, that a lot of water, when we had a good rain, we'd have water stand between us and the, between the church building itself and the class, the gym. So we got a bid on that and went ahead and got those people to take care of the drainage problem. And I don't believe we'd really have a problem at this stage of the game. So this may sound very little or small to most of you, but we did place the carpet on the entrance, both entrances to the church. Makes first impression, good impression, people. So we thought that was good. The next thing we came up with, as we felt that the church building itself needed painting exterior, so we got the cracks in the walls repaired. And we had a faucet back here that was leaking, and it looked like it was going to break off, and water would be between the walls. So we had to replace it at the same time. Oh, and while we were checking to get an estimate on doing the painting of the gym and the school, we found that we had a water leak over, a roof leak over on this end of the gym. So we got that replaced, and that's all taken care of. Let's see. We're at a stage now of where we're getting estimates on replacing all the windows and around the church building and the ones on the school. They're so, they're needed real bad, and so we were hoping that we can get someone to get us an estimate on that, so we'll get that done shortly. And let's see. Oh, yeah, one of the things that we're working on is seeing if we could take care of the security problem in the school and the church. We know now that doors are open and people can come in and out most anytime they want to, so we felt like we should be working on that to get that done as quickly as possible. But I can't think of really anything other than the gym floor. We're getting a bid on the gym floor, level it up and put a new surface on the floor. So that's something that we're working on, we're going to bid to see what that's going to cost us. We could have done a lot of this faster than we did, but two reasons. One was the funds were available, and we kind of had, and I guess it's a good thing that we were not able to get the contractors any faster than we did, because we would have had to delay it anyway. But, folks, we just have a long ways to go. We need every dollar we can if we're going to get this thing done. And I think we can come up with a very good, beautiful building, grounds, and school and all. But we all have to be dedicated and continue to donate this program so we can look at it and feel real good about it. So I guess that's about all I can say today, this evening, about this. If you have any other questions to ask me, you can come to me personally or one of those on the committee, and we'll see if we can answer your questions. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks. So Ben, on the committee are you as the chair. There's Pastor Ben, there's myself, there's Byron, Bob Solomon, Craig Barnhart, and Cliff, excuse me, Bartholomew, Cliff Barnhart, I'm sorry, I mixed those up. And who else? Is there anyone else? I think that's everybody, right? Yeah, that's everybody. So these guys have been getting together very faithfully, and when Ben went through the list of projects, then you didn't say how, when we get together, there's a lot of talk about what's important, what's good, what will work, making sure that we've got enough bids, that we've got the right bids, or there's something wrong with a bid. So there's a lot of scrutiny that goes into it, a lot of thought, a lot of energy that goes into, you know, making all these projects come together. So something like the roof, you kind of alluded to it, like, we got the, we looked at bids, we picked one, and then we got the conference involved, and they said, "Well, wait a second. We need a certain type of thing done", and so they made the builder, the roofer, go back to school so that he could learn how to do those things, so that when they put the roof, he put the roof on it, it was not only what we wanted, but it was up to the standard that the conference wanted, so that we would have a very good roof, right? And that was a process, so.
Yeah, there's one thing I'd like to say about the prioritizing everything. We would like to do some of the larger jobs, but I think you're... We would like to do some of the larger jobs, but I think you understand why we're not being able to do that this time. So we're taking on some, some of the smaller ones, which isn't that small. I'm, I'm afraid we're going to be shocked when we get the estimate on the windows and all of them, but Lord's blessed and I'm sure he's going to continue to do that, just giving the glory.
Amen. And, and again, with that, you're right, these are, they seem like, we call them small projects, but they still are pretty large dollar wise. It costs a lot. All, all of these things, just for the folks that are here and the folks that are online, these are things that normally come to our church board and we spend a lot of time talking about it, but we get paralyzed, we can't move on it because of the large dollar value that's associated with it. And it's because of faithful giving and it's because of the 2020 project and leadership for what should be built, what should be done with the money in terms of building, you know, making our building look better. That's what's made the difference here. Our church board has kind of, has said, these things are too big for us, but it's really the church at large that has decided that this is important. We need our building to look amazing. So thank you to everyone who's given, thank you to Ben who's been in charge of us, in charge of our group and actually been leading, making sure that we not only get together, we talk about the right things, we spend the right amount of time on things and the things move forward.
Well, I've always heard that if you just, if you're willing to step forward and let the Lord, allow the Lord to work through you, he's going to do it. And he's doing it through this, this committee. And I think he's one of them for, one of them for being there when they're needed.
That's right. And then also, like you mentioned, there's more to come, there's more things to do around our property here at the church and also bigger plans for what we want the church to look like sometime in the future too. So keep your ears open, there's more that's going to be happening, but you know that, Ben Crawford's at the helm of, of building here at the church and making things look great. So when you see something like the AC units, the eight AC units that were installed, that was a big thing and that's, that's due to the leadership of Ben, the work of this group and then, and then the giving for all, from all of our church members. So thank you. Thanks. So moving on to our next, next question, there's a question here that says, and this is going to be a little tough, is there a TV channel to see the church service? Right? So now when we do our service, it goes out through YouTube?
Yes.
Right? And I know that's tough for some people. YouTube is, it's ubiquitous, people know how to go to it, but not everyone has access. So what should they do?
My number is on, my number is on the website. Please reach out to me. If it's a, YouTube is not hard, as long as you have an internet connection. And I know that, I guess you did this back when the pandemic started and I have no problem doing this either. If it's an issue about getting online or maybe obviously if you're watching right now and you guys who are here, I guess you know how YouTube works, but maybe you know of somebody who, you know, that they don't know how it works, let me know. I will go to your house and help you get on YouTube. But we send out the link every Sabbath. We have a YouTube page if, if you know what I mean, I think you should subscribe and you will get notifications and things like that when a church service goes up or a video goes up. We do not have a TV channel. I, I mean, I guess that's, you know, back in the days of satellite and broadcasting is maybe a little more readily available, but we do not have a TV channel. That would cost money that we don't necessarily have. But we really want to make it accessible for you to watch. YouTube is the place to do it. If you know of anybody, call me and, and I will help.
So along those lines, so definitely call pastor. If you are having trouble accessing things, you know someone has, has trouble accessing something that the church is putting out, just let it be known, either get ahold of pastor or get ahold of Byron. We have a team of folks who does technical ministry here at our church. And so what pastor was alluding to is during the pandemic, I, I went to a couple of church members' houses to help them with Zoom or with setting up things so that they could view our, our church service, things like that. You know, we have folks that are willing to come to your house to help. We don't want anyone to feel like they're left out. We know, like, like you'd mentioned, this pandemic has disproportionately affected younger folks and older folks and we don't want anyone to be left behind. So anything we can do to help, we will do. Moving on, oh, there was a question also probably related to this, can, can we use the radio station to air our service?
Yeah, so that's been something that has been talked about. Radio is difficult. There's, you know, when you're working with radio, you're also kind of working with the government. And if you've ever, you know, gone to the DMV, you know how much of a process that can be. So it's definitely something that has been talked about. What it boils down to is like time, right? Byron works very hard to make all of this happen. That is something else that, you know, it's something else that is so, so, so much time to do. So we need people, we need, this, this goes back, we need help with things around the church. If you would like to have it on the radio, we will, we will use you to help get that done. But it is possible, we can, we can stream our own stuff through the radio station and it is, it's possible. We can, we can work on that.
A question came in, this is, it's a little bit long, let me read it. With the pandemic, we've had a great reset. As we consider resuming church in person, can we rethink the church service? It never made sense to me that we get up early on Sabbath and dress up for church. Neither of these things are supported by the Bible. I want a church service that starts later and is more open to people who don't own suits. Actually, it's kind of a long statement with a question embedded in it.
Sure.
What are your thoughts?
So a little bit of the history I know have been told about the Gainesville Seventh Day Adventist Church before coming here, before the pandemic, apparently we were bursting at the seams, which is a great problem to have, right? We were looking at apparently having two services. That's what I've been told.
Light talk about that.
Yeah, we're, things that were being talked about and, and then the pandemic happened and we don't have that problem anymore. I am very open, I actually really liked that question and I think that it is, it's speaking to maybe a group of people who traditional church maybe necessarily isn't their thing, but they love the Lord and they want a fellowship and they want, they want a service that's just a little bit different. Right now, in terms of having a second service, we, what you're asking is for, it's time, like I said about the radio station. We have, say, a praise team, they put in a lot of time and they have places they need to go and places they need to be. We have people on the praise team who drive all the way from Ocala to be here. It's a lot of time and, and manpower to get something like that done. If there really is a desire, and I really like this question, like I said, I am very open to having a second service, but it's going to have to be probably a little organic. And what I mean by that is it'll start small. It would be a recognized, maybe a recognized second service. A lot of talk has to happen before we can make something like this happen, but I am very open to coming back to church a little bit later or at another time and, and, and preaching the word again with you. I don't mind that and we can do it a little bit differently, but it's going to have to be organic. There's going to have to be buy-in from somebody who, and the people who really want this, meaning we are not going to require, say, the praise team or AV, you know, these people who have other things to do. They give of their time, they volunteer. We can do this, but it's, it's going to be a little like a small group kind of a thing. And yes, we can do this. We can do this.
Go ahead, Ben.
I think I forgot one thing that we're actually, it's in the process of being made, is the platform is going to be raised up for the AV equipment up there.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
I, I don't know why we missed that.
That's true. You can't see it now, but behind you, there's a, there's a whole apparatus being made for the AV team. It's true. But yeah, another service, I love that idea and I think we can do it.
Yeah. There, just a piece of this, this, this person's asking, he or she is asking, they, they want church to be more open for people who don't wear suits. So we don't have a dress code here.
Yeah, that's true.
Come as you are, we want people to come to church. That's what we want. We want people to come and worship God together. That's what we want. So please feel open and free to come here. You don't have to put on a suit. As we open up more programming, as things happen, if there's organically a second service forms, that's great. Things may change over time and we may get, you know, maybe before the end of this year or into the beginning of next, I think we're going to get to that point where we're bursting at the seams again. We'll have more people, so many people in here that will not know what to do again. And at that point in time, we will seriously have to consider what we'll have to do next. So, so please just come to church and we'll figure it out from there. Next question. This was an interesting question, just, a person was confused as I was told that some ministries need to be put on hold. Are some ministries considered priority?
This might be a misunderstanding. For example, what you may have heard is that, say, the prison ministry is on hold. It's been paused. The nominating committee decided to pause it for about six months. That has nothing to do with it being less important than another ministry. The reason for that is because right now with the pandemic, the way it is, we cannot get into the prisons. So we just put a pause on it for six months as a way to say, hopefully, either before the six months or at the six months, maybe we just timed it really well, that we'll be able to get back into the prisons and minister there. Another ministry that's kind of on pause, and maybe that's what you're referring to, is right now the homeless ministry. The reason for that is because we do not have someone to lead that. So it's not that it's been put on pause because it's less important, it's because there is not someone to lead that ministry. And the same for, say, children's Sabbath schools. It's the same idea with that. Nothing is on hold because it's less important. Every ministry is important. Some of them are just on hold out of necessity right now.
Absolutely. And all the ministries, once again, any ministry leader is invited to be part of our church board meetings. So if you have questions like that, come to the board meetings and we can talk about these things. Talk to me ahead of time, we can make sure it gets on the agenda. Also, we're planning to have ministry board meetings again, so if you don't want to come to the administrative meeting where we're going to be talking about budgets and the building and things like that, you can come to the ministry board meeting where they'll talk about ministry activity, including the church calendar and things like that.
Yeah, for ministry leaders watching, pay attention for a text or a call coming from me in the near future. Once this Sabbath, we'll vote on the list of leaders. After that goes into effect, I would really like to get the ministry board started and we can answer some of these questions about things being on hold out of necessity, hopefully.
Let's see. Moving on, will smaller Sabbath school classes continue to use either the free conference phone or Zoom? I think we kind of alluded to that a little bit earlier and, and we've probably covered this ground, so, you know, just so we can go, go quickly through it. If the classes feel comfortable meeting here again, they definitely can. It's hard to do both in-person and online at the same time. It's not to say it can't be done, it's just, it's challenging. So we probably have to talk about that a little bit. But also there, the, the question about whether we'll just go completely in-person, the answer to that is probably no. We still will have an online component of some sort. There's definitely folks who are still a little tentative about coming to church, you know, not sure yet. And also there's some folks who, who just meet online better and so we will have that online piece available for, for them. Not sure how it's going to be done yet, but we are keeping that in mind, so there will be something available online. There's a question about, is there an updated membership list? And so then there was a lot more pieces to this, but is there an updated membership list? So I can kind of cover this a little bit. So the answer is yes and no. Pre-pandemic, we thought we, we thought we had a good idea of where people were and how to get in contact with them. And what the pandemic taught us is that we were very, very wrong about this. When things started closing and it became very hard to meet with people, we quickly realized we not only didn't have an updated church, a, a list of members for our church, as well as folks who come to the church who aren't members, but we also didn't have good ways of contacting folks. It, it really came down to who has whose phone number or is there any way to get ahold of someone who we can't find anymore, you know, kind of thing. A lot of phone calls like that went out. I, I talked with Pastor Angelo at the time and what we did is we started compiling every list that we could from different sources. So we had a beginnings from a church membership list, we had a list from the Vision 2020 program that was meeting, that had started mailing folks, we had lists from Sabbath schools, we had personal lists, we had phone lists from all kinds of places. We kind of combined them all together to create this one huge list. And as soon as we got that together, we realized pretty quickly that everyone's phone number seems to change the minute that you get that list together because you spend a lot of time putting that list together and then it's almost certainly going to be wrong with, in a lot of things. So do we have a church membership list? Kind of. Is it something we could freely give out so that everyone could use? Probably not, because it's not in a really palatable or useful form right now. It still takes a lot of work to make sure to get things to people. Now that said, we're, we are, we do have certain things like the list that's used for texting, there are some mailing things that go out, and in both cases, those lists are not completely correct and don't encompass most of the church, they encompass some people. We're still missing a lot of folks. And so we're planning to do kind of an overhaul of our church directory. We're planning to hopefully go to something that's more user friendly, that'll be on our phones as a way to collect information so we can update information quickly. And then also, not only that, we know not everyone has a phone or wants to look things up on a phone. We'll have print directories once we start pulling that together, but that takes time, it takes effort, it takes resources and you just have to work with us on those things. But we'll do our best and we'll try to get ahold of folks. For right now, if you need to get ahold of someone urgently and you can't, try to get ahold of pastor or myself or one of the elders, we'll do our best to get you the information that you need or get a way for them to contact you.
Yeah.
Yes?
Well, you know, if I've said you're long enough, maybe I think of a lot more things we've done I didn't. But we do have the contract I meant led for the painting of the school and the gym, which is delayed because of the person and so much going at one time. So maybe within another month, month and a half, we'll get started with that. I don't know why I didn't get that down, but I didn't.
There's a lot of things that are happening with rebuilding our church, so thank you very much, Ben.
Yes, and to piggyback off what OJ was saying and to say it again, my number is on the website and so is my email.
There was a specific question about, does the church have a dress code? I already answered that. No, the church does not have a dress code. Come as you are, we want you to be here. There was a question for you, pastor, it says, could the pastor use the King James Version of the Bible in his sermon?
You don't want to answer that one?
You don't want me to answer that?
Wait, what's, could I use it or when?
Could the pastor use the King James Version of the Bible in his sermon?
Yeah. I can use the, the King James Version for sure.
Is there a reason that, that you use any particular version? Do you, do you stick with one version? Do you use a bunch of different versions?
So, right now, maybe, maybe this question is coming out of just, maybe you have your Bible open, it's King James, and you're noticing that what I'm reading isn't necessarily adding up with what yours is. I have been preaching since I've been here almost exclusively, you know, minus one or two times, out of the New International Version. The reason for that is, just like very practically, I've been given a lot of NIV Bibles. And I've been given those NIV Bibles by people who are important to me. So, yeah, I, when I went to Southern, I learned to preach, that's the Bible I used. So it has some level of sentimental value, but to be honest, I don't, I'll use any version. I also believe that, you know, and maybe there's some level of discussion on this, but I think that the King James Version is a little harder to swallow maybe from people who are, might be unchurched. And my desire is that somebody walks in- And my desire is that somebody walks in, never been to an Adventist church before, maybe never been to church before, would be able to really understand what is being said and what is read. They might not feel comfortable with the "thees" and the "vows" and any of that. But to answer your question, yes. I can start cycling through my list of Bibles and read from a different version once in a while. So, sure.
And actually, what you kind of implied there is that if you're out there listening, he said, "Please bring him a King James Bible. He needs one from you."
You know, I'm gonna get one now.
The next question is, it has to do with the timing. "Could the praise team move to before the Sabbath school?" And they specifically added, "Sitting in church from 9:30 to later, later than 1:00 PM is too long."
So, I think we hopefully will not be here past 1:30 anymore with the service moving to 11. That should answer some of that. Also, again, in speaking about volunteers and how we should respect our volunteers, the praise team, if you go to one of these bigger churches down the street, everyone's paid, right? Like, it's a huge production. But what I love about our church is that it's made up of people who are very passionate, and they do it out of the overflow in their life. Like I said, we have people who drive very far to be here, and they have things to do. So, I'm hoping, and I think that it will be, once services move to 11, starting this Sabbath, that we won't be here that long anymore. So, probably not. The praise team won't start before Sabbath school. We're gonna keep it Sabbath school and going into divine service, praise team, and moving on from there.
Kind of coupled along with that, there was another question. "Is there a reason the sound system can't be set up on Friday before Sabbath? Then everything is ready for Sabbath morning."
Yeah, so I'll just, you know, Ctrl C, Ctrl V, copy and paste. Yeah, it's about time. If you'll notice, a lot of our, a lot of our praise team are young people, and that's awesome. A lot of them are UF students, and that's awesome. And what that means is they're busy. Friday nights, there's no reason that we're forcing them not to. You know, they could if they wanted to. It's just kind of happened organically that coming in on Saturday morning earlier is what works. And so, if that's what works for them, then it works for me.
I think what you're saying is, we're, these are real people with real lives. They've had things going on. Everyone here is a volunteer. And like I said earlier, church works the best when we work together, and that means respecting each other, too. So, it's not that it couldn't happen. It's just that, you know, people have a lot going on, and they're giving of their time to make our service, you know, something that's really praise and prayer from them that everyone gets to share in. There were a couple, so those are the main questions. There were a couple of last-minute additions that came in, and we can kind of hit just a few of them if we can hit them really fast. So, we have an email bulletin that goes out. It's, that is our announcement. It goes out on Wednesdays. You'll get it in your email if you sign up for it. Just talk with Maida or go to our website. There's a form you can fill out there. They, this question asks, "Can they add the birthday list to the announcements in the bulletin?" And this is something that we used to do a long time ago. And I think with the pandemic, the bulletin changed drastically. Just to answer it pretty quickly, the answer is yes, we could do that. We have to kind of get our birthday list back together. And then we just have to, you know, kind of be consistent about sending it out. So, there's nothing stopping us. It's just a matter of getting it rolling again. There's a question that, this is unusual. We're not quite sure what the answer is here. "Has the picnic been rescheduled?" So...
Yeah. I'm assuming, and I hope that I'm answering it right, that you're talking about the beach social, and the answer is yes. That is May 16th, right? It's the Sunday after Mother's Day. So, I think it's the 16th.
We'll be finding out more about that?
Yep. But it has been rescheduled, yes.
Okay, great. There's a question about the Lord's Supper, so communion. We haven't had one. And there have been a couple of questions about, you know, when can we have that again, and what would it be like?
Yeah. It's gonna look different, most likely. But it can happen. There are churches that have done it. I think probably the reason it hasn't happened, if I have to guess, I guess, is probably because of all the transition that's happened. But it's definitely something that has been on a few people's radar and has been brought up. And the short answer is, yeah, we're working on it. Probably prepackaged stuff, you know, the sacraments. But, yeah, it can happen. And it's been brought up, and it's being talked about.
Yeah, it's another one of those organization pieces. It takes effort to make that all happen, and we just gotta figure out how to make that all come together.
Especially for those who view exclusively online. How do we get this to them? Because they're very much church members, even if they don't come every Sabbath. So...
Absolutely. I'm glad you mentioned that. The last question we're gonna hit on, because we're coming close to 8 o'clock here, is, "We are blessed to have Pastor Ben. Why is he considered temporary?"
The short answer is because that's what the conference told me. That's what they've told me. And that's just kind of how it works with pastors. Pastors used to be moved around every two years, no matter what. Conferences have changed over time, and you see pastors stay longer now. With me, I think, and I don't wanna put words into the mouth of the conference, with me, I think the reason my title is interim might be for a few reasons, but the biggest one being, everything is thrown up in the air when the pandemic happened. I don't really know what the future is. I know I would very much like to stay. I love it here. But it's ultimately not up to me. So, when I know, I'll let you all know. If it becomes permanent. Because that is also something the conference said, that, you know, we're putting this interim tag in front of your name or in front of your title because things are changing like this with the pandemic. But it could be permanent. So, if it does, you all will be the first to know.
Amen.
I hope that answers the question, because I have questions, too. It's, I don't know.
Well, it's just before 8 o'clock, just a couple minutes before 8 o'clock. I think we've covered a lot of ground. I know there's more questions out there. There are more people who have questions. And we will probably do something like this again in the future as we move forward. Hopefully, we won't have to do it like this. Maybe next time, we can do it in a setting that's more informal and more likely to have people who can just bring questions directly. But if you have more questions, don't be afraid to ask. You don't have to wait. You can always reach out to Pastor Ben. His information's on the website. You can find it there.
Yes.
You can reach out to me as well, any of the elders, any of the people on our church board, any of our ministry leaders. You know, information is out there. If they don't know the answer, if I don't know the answer, we'll ask around till we find an answer for you. We may not always have the best answer, but we're all striving together. We're working together. And we're all, you know, just people trying to follow God, trying to live a godly life and trying to, you know, be there for each other. So, just keep encouraging each other, keep asking those questions, keep being there for each other. Do you have anything that you wanted to add to close us out?
Just in your own, you know, your personal devotions, keep this church in prayer. We, this last Sabbath, we talked about, the church only functions as much as the Holy Spirit is present in it. And so, just continue to pray for that. As uncomfortable as closing churches were, opening churches is uncomfortable as well. So, pray for God's leading, because that's all we can, that's all we can hope for.
Do you wanna add anything else, Ben?
Nope. Best things.
Well, then, would you mind leading us to close us out in prayer?
Yep. Kind and heavenly Father, Lord, I pray that what we've done here this evening, number one, is made acceptable in your sight. Number two, I pray that hopefully questions were answered. And Lord, I ask also that if there are now more questions, Lord, that you would give us the wisdom to answer them. Lord, that you would lead this church. And God, that your Holy Spirit would be so obviously present in this, in this building, but not only the building, but in our personal lives, God, that, you know, when people come in contact with the Gainesville Seventh-day Adventist Church or a member of the Gainesville Seventh-day Adventist Church, that they just know, man, something is different about them. And so, Lord, we just, we wait for your leading. And God, we pray that our plans aren't our plans, but that you would continue to direct our steps as we try to, as we try to lead this church and do it justice in your name. Amen. Thanks for being here online, and big thanks to those who came in person. Thanks. Yep, the light is green now, so it means...